We're gonna be shooing this meeting along because we're a half hour short on our time. And we're gonna have to go with the one minute, three minutes. So if I do cut you off, it's for that reason, that reason only. Thank you so much.
Having my presentation, how much?
I believe we just got five minutes for this. We've got five minutes for the presentations. And then we have a couple of other things. Louis, I don't know if he's here. We might lose time there. But anyhow, we'll start with special considerations. If participating virtually, please mute yourself, mute yourself when not speaking. Use the raise hand feature.
No microphone.
Come on up here a little bit then. Sorry. Yeah, I don't think I can make. I can hear myself. That's it. I hear myself, that's all. Please limit extraneous use of the chat feature as it can distract board members and audience members from the conversations taking place and about notice items in the meeting. Rules of participation. Anyone wishing to speak, please raise your hand. After recognition, address your comments to the chair. Comments must relate to the pending agenda items. Board rules, audience, and board members can have up to two-minute turns or two-minute turns to speak on a topic. Two two-minute ones, turns. Those speaking should be concise and limit comments to one of one minute per turn. Those giving reports should limit their reports to three, three-minute or five, five-minute presentations. Please silence all electronic devices. Okay, call to order. Okay, we're gonna do the roll call.
And I'm gonna do a roll call, starting with the people that I currently see. Dave Barber, Julie Devilbis, Paul Robati.
Here.
Michelle Katchuk, Christopher Salas.
Here.
Angie Solomon.
Here.
Wookiee Kim.
Here.
Lindsay Alred. Lindsay, did you show up yet? Once, twice. Morgan, Morgan's not attending. Louis Caldera, is online? Louis, once, twice. Muhammad, Muhammad, are you online? No Muhammad, once, twice, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I have seven, we have four.
Okay. Filling of vacancies on board. Is anybody here wanting to be a board member? I don't think anybody mentioned to me. What about online? Anyone? No? No, okay. Okay, and we'll start with our, can I change this, the, the structure of this? Let's see if we can get this thing going fast. Number three, public safety liaison. Honolulu Fire Department. Hey, home? Can you guys hear us?
Black fires currently here.
No? Okay, no fire department. Okay, next, Honolulu Police Department. We'll start with District One first.
Evening, Aloha Chair Robati, board members and everyone in attendance. Lieutenant Arnold Segusi representing the Honolulu Police Department, District One, Community Area Responsibility. Thank you for you guys' time and patience. For more statistical information, you guys can go to the HPD public website, The statistical information for the month of August is as follows. Motor vehicle thefts is two. Previous to that was one. Burglaries was zero. Previous was one. Thefts were thirteen. Previous month was eight. U M Vs is four. Previous to that was eight assaults were six. Previous month was zero. Sex assault was one. Previous month was zero. There was no graffiti cases reported in both months. And drug offenses for this month of August was zero. Previous month was one. Total cost for service was four hundred and sixty-five calls for service for the month of August compared to the previous month of three hundred and ninety-nine. I did check for the categories of robbery, and there was none reported for our particular area. So there were sixty-six more calls for service from the previous month. There's no critical breaches for the District One area responsibility at this point in time. The month of September is the National Suicide Prevention Month. Please help, please let us be aware of the signs of depression and take notice of life triggers that may cause someone to hurt themselves. I'm going to, I have posted several numbers in the chat for everyone to see. I've utilized these numbers in the past while on duty, and they've provided me excellent advice and proper measures in dealing with someone thinking about suicide. Safety tip of the month of September for District One will be pedestrian safety. It's a kind of a roundabout thing. We kind of circled back totally around since we just got done with the last major holiday of Labor Day and summer vacation is over. There will be more pedestrian traffic in areas of schools and bus transit areas. We're asking our community members to leave early to avoid rushing. Rushing causes everyone to become complacent in regards to safety. Drivers, please reduce the speed in these areas, intersections, especially mid-block intersection crosswalks. At this time, I'm gonna yield back the rest of my time and take any questions from the board members and the public attendees in regards to the District One Community Area Responsibility.
Anybody have questions for officers? Anybody? Nope, doesn't seem like any questions. Thank you very much. Okay, District Seven.
Hi, good evening. Lieutenant Nishimura from HPD District Seven, East Honolulu. The following are the monthly statistics for August. Motor vehicle theft, eleven. Burglary, fifteen. Theft, twenty-four. U E M V or car break-ins were eight. Our tip for the month also is pedestrian safety. And I'd like to add on to what Lieutenant Segusio had already mentioned, that drivers, please yield to the pedestrians in the crosswalks. And also for pedestrians, please use the crosswalks and please obey any of the pedestrian control devices. Thank you.
I do have one thing to say. Louis is gonna be doing a, a report, board report, on a certain part of town. And I'd like the officers to stay around and listen to it. And otherwise, thank you very much.
Joanne, how's it going? Online.
Online, right, sorry. Okay, Joanne.
Well, this is to Officer Nishimura, Lieutenant Nishimura. First of all, thank you for helping to clear up the parks and the sidewalks. I mean, it's gotten better at Moilili. I think you pushed them to District One. But the homeless are not as plentiful as before, except for Moilili baseball field. So keep working to get them out of the parks and the sidewalks so we can get our facilities back for the general public to use. So I appreciate all you guys are doing, even Major Lynch's team. So please help us and get the cars off the sidewalk as well, too. That's what we've been trying to work on as well.
Yeah, thanks, Joanne. I'm aware of the parking situation, and yes, we are working on it. Thank you.
Yeah, and at least you guys are doing something. So I appreciate that. So keep, keep up the good work.
Hey, anybody else? Anybody else? Nope, then we'll just move along, yeah. Okay, here we go. Now we're going with board reports. Louis just came up and he's doing one on Housing and Homelessness Committee. And
We don't have a There we go.
So on the thirty-first of August at seven o'clock, we had our meeting of homelessness, Housing and Homelessness Committee meeting, is that what it's called?
Yes.
Sorry, I wanna make sure I got it right. McCully Neighborhood Board Housing and Homelessness Committee Meeting Minutes. I'm gonna go over that real quick. People present, myself, Tess was there, Melvia was there, John was there, Sarah was there, and Milton. I didn't wanna put in the last names, but I do have that on the minutes itself. The meeting was called to order at seven oh three. We identified key issues of what the committee was focused on, which is complex and interconnected issues of homelessness and drug use, recognizing their multifaceted nature and the individual variations in how they manifest, right? So everybody's different, and everybody has their own deal going on in this park or in this area that we're talking about. Varied attitudes towards housing. Some homeless individuals may resist housing and employer, "not my problem, not your problem" attitude. Basically, the fact that they are homeless is our problem and not theirs, right? So proposal is a solution to include targeted outreach and engagement programs for those that are really chronically homeless individuals with this mindset, right? So they're not looking for a house, and they're never gonna wanna ever be in a house. Employed homeless population, we have to recognize the presence of a significant number of homeless individuals that have jobs, the hidden homeless, you know? So the discussion revolved around creating pathways to support and transition these individuals into stable housing. They have jobs, they just don't have the right housing or the right housing opportunities, right, presented to them. Challenges with pets. We kinda all know this, that a lot of the difficulties with homelessness is with the animal companions. And so to accommodate that would be maybe an outreach for animal care. So when there is a sweep, there's also people there to assist with animals rather than, I'm not sure what they do. So referral to services in Makaha. There was a concern by one of our community members that McCully area homelessness individuals are sent to Makaha for services. I know this, I know about this area really well. There is a resolution that was made concerning the inequity in the amount of homeless resource services across the island. And so there is a need to pay attention to that. A lot of our resources is in Makaha. And so they're being told to go to Makaha. So that was one of the conversations we had. Lack of affordable housing, again emphasizing the income requirement for affordable housing, making that those that are homeless need to have income to even be able to afford affordable housing. So that's an issue, right? Mental health issues, we know about and acknowledge the prevalence of mental health challenges among the homeless population. And we discussed revolving around enhancing access to mental health services and support in our area. If we can get people to get support in our area and be housed in our area and get all of their care in our area, that might be an option. Substance abuse and addiction, explore the dual role of drug abuse. The cause and consequences can be of homelessness. Creating job opportunities for homeless individuals, we're offering addiction treatment services at the same time. We talked about the chefs or Fair Start in Seattle, where those that were struggling with homelessness were given an opportunity to become a chef, and people would come to this restaurant and cater to supporting them in their movement. Economic challenges, recognized factors such as job loss, low wages, contributing to homelessness, discussions centered around exploring economic support and mechanisms for individuals in need, we know that part. Legal and criminal justice involvement, we understand that part. Strategies were discussed to mitigate legal barriers to stable housing, basically taking away their criminal record just to house them, right? But again, that creates a liability because you have to live around people who are, who need to understand what they're working with as well, right, as neighbors. Stigma and discrimination, we talked about that, the societal stigma and discrimination faced by homeless individuals. Lack of access to services. Sometimes people just don't have the access to mental health or health support services. And then there's unforeseen circumstances where people think that if they can just go down to the beach and stay for the week because they can't make rent, it's gonna be okay, and they end up staying there for more than just a week, more than just a month, you know? So one, one option that we had talked about is to help those that are struggling with homelessness the same way we do it, those that are struggling with alcoholism. And that's to create a sponsorship, you know, for those that just need an ID or a ride to work or just a ride to an interview of some sort, right? So solutions, maybe establish a neighborhood security watch where we're not going around trying to, you know, walk around with a bat or anything. We're trying to learn and trying to talk to people that are struggling with homelessness in our, in our community. Um, we are, okay, we're gonna assign specific tax research responsibilities to committee members for follow-up actions, and then we're gonna develop a community communication plan to facilitate ongoing information sharing as well as create a pathway for those that are struggling with homelessness to get resources without going through four different offices. Thank you again for the opportunity, you guys.
Thank you. Questions? Wait, first, those board members? Any questions?
Oh, I need to come up.
Or else they're not gonna be able to hear anything.
Yeah, just, just the other day, I went by Punch Bowl on the state property at the Board of Health, and they have the tiny houses. They're not the cowhollies, but they're small, tiny houses. And there was maybe, I don't know, twenty or something over there, just driving by. Now, that's really good, and it can be done in almost any parts of our neighborhood without any trouble. So I hope they could be identified, like, you know, under the freeway, under a bunch of the freeways, you know, places like that. I think it's a really easy kind of thing, which you expressed about the sponsorship and the, and the backup services and everything. It'd be a really good idea.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Again, anybody on the board have anything, any questions? Okay, now open up to anybody else? Anybody? You got one? Joanne's got one.
Regarding getting treatment in our area, which you mentioned, I don't want anybody to get treatment in our area. I think they have to be, it has to be a specific place because they're just putting people in places that have a lot of homeless, which is Moilili, McCully. So we're being inundated with all these kind of drug rehab and transitional housing, and it really creates a bad environment here. I'm telling you because I live here, and I've seen the difference from fifty years till now. Parks are destroyed, the roads are dirty. I mean, it's, it's, you got people like, I don't know, I got a person right outside my door right now dancing away, and I don't know if he's on drugs or whatever. It seems like he is. So it's not good for the neighborhood to have people who we don't know what they might do because they, most of it is drugs. And I think that they have to make a law that prohibits drugs, period. Drugs are illegal. Anybody taking drugs, that's illegal. Go to jail. Because that is causing the mental illness, and that is causing all this homelessness. Most of the problem is caused because of drugs. I don't know why people allow them to take drugs or give them drugs. There should be no drugs banning it, like in Southeast Asia. That's what they do. Drugs are banned, period. Too many drug problems.
Wrap it up, please?
I just did.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Sarah Worth. I'm actually a new member of the Waikiki Neighborhood Board, and I attended your committee, and it was awesome. And I really appreciate that you are taking the lead in organizing this, and hopefully the boards can collaborate. Because what affects you affects Waikiki, and especially that bridge comes in, we're gonna be even closer. So hopefully we continue working together.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, there's a hand up there, I think. Joanne again? Hey, Joanne, one more time.
I didn't put my hand down, never mind.
Okay, thank you.
The minutes, wait, the minutes, Lyndon, you said are on the
That's on their website. Yeah, that's where I was reading it.
Oh, okay, good.
So I don't have a printout. I don't have printing it, so.
And how many members?
Four with me, five. Yeah, it was actually really, and we had, and we had people that were struggling with homelessness there, so. Yeah.
White Shield.
Sick, oh yeah, he's White Shield, yes, yes. Six people.
What's the date and time of the next meeting?
So it's probably gonna be the, I'm sorry, I was gonna, I was supposed to mention that in my, it's gonna be the last Thursday before the end of the month. I have it here. September twenty-eighth, the last Thursday of the month, seven PM at Kolo Park again. I think that was a good opportunity. If it rains, I don't know what to do. We'll figure it out.
Do the freeways.
There's that option. Oh, September twenty-eighth, seven PM at Kolo Park, the last Thursday. I'm gonna try to stick to that so I can bring you fresh information the next Thursday.
Very cool. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, next one. Any more questions? Everybody? Okey-dokey. Next on our board reports, we have David Barber and Laura Ruby. Yes, might as well come on.
I need an extra chair.
No, they're gonna stand up.
Well, I don't know. Can we stretch it that far? Where's, where's the mic? This is the microphone.
Oh, you can sit here.
This is the microphone.
Omni-directional.
I'll stay there, yeah.
Barbara, come over here.
Okay.
Hello, neighbors.
Okay.
It's not gonna be my chance.
I invited my friends, but I didn't know they were gonna come here that quick. Okay, okay, we got Laura and David. Go ahead, Laura.
Okay, hi, I'm Laura Ruby, and this is Dave Barber. And we are people that are putting forward the initiative that's gonna take place, the community initiative, gonna take place Saturday at Alaway School Cafeteria at one-thirty in the afternoon, and two o'clock starts the program. And what we are going to be doing is talking about the quality of our life in our community, you know, the sense of place. And this has to do with the reasons why we do not want a bridge over the Alaway Canal and for all the very good reasons. So Dave's gonna take it first.
Just wanted to report that a little bit about how the meeting went and what the position of the other people there was. So they went around asking each other. First of all, let me tell you, if anybody wants to see that meeting, it's on YouTube. You can go to Alaway Pedestrian Bridge, and you can bring it up. It's a one-hour meeting. You can watch the whole thing straight through, which I hope somebody, as many people watch it as possible. So, so anyway, they went around and talked to people, and when it came to me, well, first she went to John Nucci, the DPS Deputy Director, and of course, he's, he's the one pushing the bridge. And then they talked to John Mers, Waikiki Neighborhood Board member. He spoke that the Waikiki Neighborhood Board supported the resolution, supported the bridge, and he thinks it's a wonderful bridge, and he's happy with the design of it. And then came my turn, and I said that I didn't like the bridge and that our Neighborhood Board had passed a resolution against it. And we, we started out with a lot of people not wanting any bridge at all, but then we moderated our position down a little bit to, to we will accept the bridge with a modest design. So we passed a resolution against the design, passed it unanimous. And I think in a way that's a good thing. We were against it at first, but our chairman at the time, Tim Streets, he, he made the resolution because some, some neighborhood members are in favor of the bridge. They might, they might like it. They might live close by and wanna walk across. So, so we, we say, okay, we don't mind a bridge, but we don't want that, that thing that they have planned. That's sixty-three million dollar thing sticking eight hundred and eighty feet up in the air with a simple span. I have pictures that I brought and showed them of a simple bridge in, across the river in Iowa City. And there's another one, it has two small pillars, but there's one in Banff, Canada, that has no pillars, no nothing, just a straight span across, low rise, and that can get the job done. And I, I'm not an engineer that does cost calculations, but I bet you that would be ten or fifteen million compared to sixty-three million. You can imagine what it would cost to construct a tower a hundred and eighty feet in the air, you know, and and
An unnecessary tower.
Eighty percent of the funds for that bridge is federal, but still, that's taxpayer money, whether it's coming from federal or where it's coming from. It's still a waste of money, and we could use that money for other things. And, and so we, we mostly against the design of the bridge. So after I spoke, then the moderator, Lauren Day, it was supposed to be, I forget.
Not Paul Drews.
Another guy.
I know, Huff.
Yeah, he, he was supposed, he was supposed to have been the moderator, but he had to go to the Maui Fires at that time. And so Lauren Day took over. She's very good. So after I spoke, Lauren asked John, John Nucci, she asked, thank you, she asked him, comment on that, speak to the design. Why is it being designed that way? She asked that direct question to John. His reply, I, I took, I took this off the direct words. When we look at any project, we really want to look at all the general use that we will affect at the site. And from the start, we were very aware that the Alaway is a very valued recreational waterway for a very native sport of canoe paddling. And he goes on to talk about paddling. At no point did he say, why do you have to have a tower a hundred and eighty feet in the air to, to deal with canoe paddling? That's simple, straightforward, as I mentioned a minute ago. You could, the canoes could go right under that, the same as they're going under the stake.
We have to give half and half. Almost finished, because he's giving us five minutes, and we need, I need the other half.
Okay, but, but anyway, he, he had no, no reply to why it's being designed that way, other than the fact that they want a big monument to themselves, I think.
Yes, it was a Kirk Caldwell initiative, and when mayors do this, they want a legacy project for a long time. Now, I'm, Dave said the tower looked like a harp to him. So I want you to keep this in mind. H A R T, very close to H A R P, and you think about what it is. It's the huge drain of our taxpayer dollars and unnecessary large, massive constructions. So that's a framing for what happens at the political level. Let's put it that way. We're gonna have the big event on Saturday, and we'll go into it much more. But what I wanted to say is some of the things that we wanted to have in mind. Can you turn? Okay, this is just to show you just a little bit of the historical memories that we have. I can have much more. That's a Ranger Baker of the Kolo in McCully area. And that's, that's kind of faded out, but that's the rice growing area in Moilili. Also, next, please. And we also had the duck farms, both are duck farms, and then at the lower portion, the Malko from Waikiki, that's all looking towards the rice farming that was up there, as well as other mixed, you know, Kolo and things like that, okay? And then it comes along in the mid nineteen twenties, and they have decided that they must have saved Waikiki in some ways and are gonna put in the Big Canal. And they had the dredger, which carved the Alaway Canal out for supposed good exit to the ocean of water resources. However, what they did at the same time was to put heavy fines on those like the duck farm owners and the small farmers, and that if you didn't raise up your property to a certain height, you would have, you would be evicted, and that would be the end of your enterprise. And so that was shameful. This was done by Pinkham, who was the Health Department at the time, saying it was unhealthy there. It wasn't any more unhealthy than any of the places we have here now. And then Dellingham came in, and he was sort of the engineering and control of this. And what he did is he took the fill land and put it all out around here, probably exactly right here even, all the way out to McKinley High School. And when he found out that he could take more out, he engineered something to go wider on the canal so that he could take all of that fill land to build Alamoana Center. There you see the developers, the greed, the politicians, as they gather in and say, next.
The one minute.
Oh, 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 I'm gonna have to say any of the things that I wanna say, but we can come back for questions for people. This is a view from the McCully Bridge, next. You can see Diamond Head back there, it's a little washed out. And then here's, here's our park right at the area where it's supposed bridges to be built. This is a grove of trees. And go ahead, next, okay, and those are the docks that are right there with the halau. Go ahead, and let's skip this one. And then here are the kolaeas, who probably all see kolaeas around in our parks, but you know, it's been a wonderful thing. Forty-three years I've lived in my place, right across from the canal, and I hear them homing in at night. I can't see them, but they're coming in and they're locating on the water and to their friends to find their, their fields that they go back to. And so it's just a wonderful experience. These are migratory birds, and they're protected by a treaty. Okay, next. These are the white terns that also live in the trees there, and they're very interesting birds because they go fishing in the waters, but they put their eggs not in a nest, but right on the branches. So you see, they're very vulnerable type of bird. Okay, okay, next, next, quick, okay. This, can you see the gray? Do you see a red line? That's what it will look like from the Makai side. That's the gray that will be seen from that side because that's a freeway off-ramp for the AD off-ramp. Next, okay, and that's, well, I skipped that, and that's what it will look like on the other side. And here's the four bridges I wanted to show you. This is the one in Banff. You can see it curving, slight, very nice, fits in with the environment. Next, please. And then here are the four. This is from Dublin, a bridge, and then the Iowa City Bridge that was mentioned. And then this is our own little Alanyo Bridge. I don't know if you know, but I've got the name changed from Houston Ditch to Alanyo, which was the correct naming of the stream. And it's about eighty feet, whereas it crossing the canal is about two hundred and fifty feet. And all of these longer bridges we showed you can all cross, cross very easily with two hundred and fifty feet. This is just an example of a small bridge, and I might just say, all the bicycle paths all around the island are only ten feet wide. A bridge does not have to go any more than ten feet wide.
Okay, Laura, thank you. Okay, we got, anybody have questions here? Wait, 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 on the board?
Need to address the chair, to be recognized by a chair, and the chair is recognizing the board first. Need to address the chair, should be, be recognized by a chair, and the chair is recognizing the board first.
Anybody on the board have any questions? Anybody on screen, do you have anybody?
You just have to speak louder in here.
Wait, one second. Do we have anybody?
No board members.
Okay, now.
I only have one question. You mentioned in an earlier meeting that the bridge would be so massive and would create problems on the Alaway Boulevard. And so my question is, is it that high because it goes across Alaway Boulevard?
They have put unnecessary restrictions or criteria on what the bridge should be. They always give the 100-year flood, which is not necessary. They also say canoes have to paddle underneath. But my thought is, if you can bear with me, that Andre the Giant in a canoe standing up would still have plenty of headroom. In other words, it's not something that has to be that tall at all. Like the ones I showed, we're, we're very, very sure.
Let me answer. No, it does not cross the Alaway. It would be a lot of bulwark or whatever you call it.
The bulwarks are in either side or concrete.
It could not go across the Alaway, the Alaway Boulevard.
It would not, no.
It would not cross the street.
Like an aircraft carrier with those big, big landing of an aircraft carrier, and cantilever out over the canal and into the Alaway Boulevard, so all of the...
That was my question.
The sidewalks, the promenade, which is historical, both Alaway Canal and the promenade are historical. Was the, was the park, we'd go out there, they'd have to reroute the street. That would make people in Waikiki even getting harder, having a harder time to get out of the Alaway Canal, especially if the mayor goes through with complete streets, which is another lane that would be taken out of Alaway Boulevard.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Just a clarification, they said they're going to reroute the street.
Well, they're going to have to, because they're, it's too massive to control. If you saw the bridges I presented, they don't involve anything that's massive with concrete on either end. They're not in the...
Rounding in any of the...
Yeah, it's on all of the plans. It's, it's taking away space, is what it's doing, on both sides. The, the, our Malka side, it's, it's going to be 150 feet of ADA compliant ground. Now, what does that do? It goes bisects the whole park, and that's it. On the other side, how does that big, massive concrete bulwark get people off from up so high? They have switchbacks, so can the bikes ride on switchbacks? Probably not.
Okay.
Difficult.
Next.
It's not a good idea to have anything that's so intrusive into the neighborhood.
And you're, one of the things that you were, you wanted to get across, Laura, right? Is that there's a meeting on Saturday?
Yes, again, just to reiterate, the meeting is on Saturday, at, starts at 1:30 for registration and refreshments, and then at 2 o'clock, the meeting will start. And this is the Alaway School Park Cafeteria, and there's plenty of parking around there in the park also. And we just really welcome all of you, because there's so many things I could have gotten into, and we'll get, be able to get to on Saturday, of why, the questions are posed. Why should somebody want a bridge? Why does somebody not want a bridge? Why does somebody like the design of the bridge? Why does somebody think the design is excessive? Why, how do the bicycle, bicycle leads feel just crossing the bridge? They don't care what the bridge looks like? Or do they have to have a tower for the bridge?
Careful.
And I have some more here that people didn't get, if you didn't get one of our emails.
They can have a sound up online.
I got one on the board, different subjects. No, we have somebody, another question? Wait a second, wait a second, Laura? Daisy.
Okay, oh, hi Daisy.
Hello.
Hi Daisy.
Dave, I saw both of you on Insight. And Jeff Mertz is Urban Planner, and of course Deputy Director John Nucci. They mentioned that it would be used as an evacuation path also, thinking people from Waikiki can use that to get out of the tsunami or any kind of flooding, which goes against what the city emergency management said. You have to go up fourth floor and above in a reinforced building. Why would you go out and risk your life into a tidal wave? That does not make sense. There's no reason why you should build a bridge. Also, the span of the Alaway Canal is actually 250 feet. So this is about 70 feet less than the width of the canal, and it's going to be huge. A lot of people don't realize, also, don't forget the cables and the wires, and all the lights that are going to be shown from the cables into your homes, which people have no idea that's going to happen until it's built. They think it's great, but wait till it really lights up into the sky at night. It's, and it's going to be, make a lot of noise when the wind blows into those metal cables. A lot of people have to really wake up and see, and don't, and also, don't you have another meeting on March 19th at Washington Middle regarding all the area that's happening?
Don't you address the watershed Alaway?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's another meeting that people in the area, in your area or our area, should be aware of too, at Washington Community at 7:30 to 5:30 to 7:30 PM in the cafeteria on Tuesday, the 19th. That will be also done by the area legislators. Thank you for the presentation. Fortunately, Lauren Day all, did seem to favor the city and Jeff Mertz, the planner for Waikiki. So unfortunately, you didn't have much chance to rebuttal, but good job with you and Dave, thank you.
Can I respond to her comment?
Yeah, and I'll do a quick response to you.
Can I respond to her comment?
Sure, you can.
Okay. I'd just like to say that the city is building that bridge as an escape route for 20,000 people in the case of an emergency, tsunami or whatever. And also, the tsunami inundation zone goes all the way up to the end of, to King and University, all the way up to that area. So if you cross that bridge, you're still going to have to run another half a mile before you get out of the tsunami inundation zone.
In the water, in the water.
And somebody, somebody that called into the TV show that night, said, yes, oh, we need that bridge in case we have another wildfire on Waikiki, you could run away from it. And I said to myself, there's not going to be a wildfire going through Waikiki. So, so I don't think that, that the need for that bridge is, is for a safety measure.
No, as Daisy said, Dave said also, it's already an established policy in the city that above the fourth floor.
We have other people.
Okay.
France so far progressed that we have rough measurements, and that the city could like lay out like survey markers, so because you're talking about, you know, these ramps and whatnot. So if we had some kind of visual, or the rest of the community had some kind of visual of what kind of, you know...
We do have pictures of what they want to build.
They have thousands of pages, engineering studies and all that. Remember, these are people getting paid by the federal money.
And sees it, it's one thing to look at a picture, when you're out in the park, if you're a paddler or using the playground or something, and you see...
Exactly. Quickly tried to show you the concrete buttresses that would be in the way.
Right, I know what I did, if you are back there.
Dave, I must say, if you come on Saturday, you, the renderings that are done by these people are kind of, I don't want to say they're fooling us, but they're minimizing the things they don't want to show us. That is the bulwarks, about how dwarf we are. I talk about things called human scale, and it's way outside of human scale.
Somebody that has authority to take those measurements and use them like survey markers in the string or whatever it was, so that people could actually...
If, when we went to the, I've gone to all the meetings, the first...
Yeah, that's it, one minute.
They didn't ask the community, they had their plans ready to go, and all they said was...
Give me 10, 10 seconds.
Okay.
The meeting this Saturday will be very close to where that area is. So anybody could walk outside and visualize that area, and, and look at the plans and see where everything will be.
Okay. You have a question?
You know, there's a...
They have a model, but the model is fake, again, I say misinformation, a model and a rendering is misinformation. Listen, I've hired for three, four years anyways, including large public sculpture, and those are not honest renderings. It's fine for a month.
Okay, right. I do have one thing to say about that. They still haven't figured out where people are going to park if they use the bridge. There's no parking area in those parks.
Right, they're not going to add parking.
They're not going to add parking, they said, no way. And do it. Wait, wait, just a second, just a second, wait. Just, gentlemen, I have questions.
But like just for bike, oh, just for buses?
Right, right.
Is it, are they anticipating creating one of those boulevards as a complete part in the future?
Complete streets.
In the very beginning, when the plantings, after the dredging came in, and planners do what they do, they had a Malka arterial, which opposite the Alaway Boulevard, but discontinued because the open parkland was what people wanted, and to continue. Now, those plans, as well as we hope this, the plans for this bridge, will go into the archives in the Frank Fossey basement, and be left with all the plans that were never done. So that's, that is, that would be the hope, that these other bridges are so easy to do.
I want to make one more response to these two people.
Go ahead, Dave, and we'll get you next.
Okay, about the, about a model of the bridge, I believe I've seen a picture of the model. But John Nucci told me after the meeting, that, after the TV show that night, that he would be willing to come to our board if we asked him to. So if we ask him, maybe he would come, maybe he would bring that model with him, and then we could see exactly what it looks like. And if anybody on the board is interested, we could get ahold of him, and, and he would, he would be willing, he said he would be willing to come to the board.
There's a way you have to look at a model, you have to look at it as if you were five...
Okay, next. Laura, next, Laura? Laura?
Sure. So I'm speaking tonight as a resident. I actually live right next to the Alaway Boulevard. So I live on Keonehanna Street. And I'm also on the Waikiki Neighborhood Board, since January, reelected in, in June, or July 1st was the original doctrineation of our group. I do not support this bridge, so I want to make that clear. I know some of our board members do support it, but I'm not speaking on behalf of the board tonight. I'm speaking behalf of myself as a resident. I, I think it's gorgeous that you can look down the entire span of the Alaway Canal from the Alaway Boulevard, and I mean, Miley and I have gone out there many times and looked at this, you know, the sun rising.
Exactly.
We're going to lose that. We're going to lose a lot of other things, and so I'll, I'll be brief. But the other aspect of this, and you just mentioned it a moment ago, is there's complete streets. There, there's the project to take away all of the parking on that side of the Alaway Boulevard. So that's something we've been discussing. Seems like the different groups don't speak to each other.
That's right.
They don't gather together collectively. And I just want to make that one statement to everyone that's there, I know we have some legislators here too, that this needs to, to be something that we all get together in, in the right organizations, the right departments, the right agencies. We all work together to have these discussions, so that we're not having them separately. And then all of a sudden, there's all this, you know, discourse, and people are not happy. So that's my statement for the season.
Please come to the meeting on Saturday.
I'll be there.
Just a point of information, the Alaway Complete Streets, isn't it going to be getting rid of all the parking? Roughly about half?
That's a lot though.
It's not all though.
It might just hard time, so there'll be some available parking. I think that the right side, the side closest to the, the water, is where they're looking to reduce the...
Yeah, because it is already full of capacity almost.
That's why, like I said, parking, there's no place to park.
Not, no, I, I said on one side. They're going to, they're going to basically, most of the day, it's, you will be able to...
Okay, next.
The complete streets, is that becoming part or more space for bikes and other things?
More or less.
Sorry.
Like Jade Street.
Your question was...
Can I say something?
No, wait, 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 wait.
What is complete streets?
By far.
Complete streets is a goal to create, to have, have the streets be more readily accessible and safer for all users, pedestrians, cyclists, and drivers. Um, the project that's going to be on the Alaway is that they're going to be taking some of the dirt and the trees, which they are not going to be getting rid of the trees, just moving them, still within the same area, same neighborhood. Um, they're going to be dedicating a full car's length, or width, I suppose, to a bike lane, both ways. They're going to be losing about, I think, half to two-thirds of the parking. That's going to be partial, and then the rest will be cut over. So for that two-thirds, it's going to go down from three lanes to two, and then the rest will go back to how it is at three lanes.
Okay.
Follow up on that. It's only part of the way. Doesn't seem, I don't want to go down that rabbit hole, but it would be kind of weird like the way that we down the Alaway?
Um, that's the, it's, the way that it's only partway, it's really weird, because I was very confused, I think the same as you, when I first heard it. It's good to, when you see the diagram, that's why they're getting rid of the dirt and some of the dirt outputs, so that's why, yeah, the bike lane will not be straight. It will be a little curvy, which allows them to keep some of the parking.
Is there a website we can go through to see more information?
Complete Streets. I don't, I don't have the website, but it's there, they have meetings, just like they have meetings for the Alaway Bridge.
Okay.
John Nucci, Nucci knows about that, so we invite him, he could talk.
Okay. Joanne had something to say. Joanne?
I just think that we got to allocate the time we're doing this board meeting to limit the time we spend on a certain subject. But you know, as far as this bridge is concerned, I'm not for it, only because we should spend our money on the problems we have at hand, instead of creating more problems in our community. So fix the problems we have at hand before you start anything. And plus, you know, after the rail has been built, I don't trust the people who do things in this island. You know, I don't know if they have the ability to do things correctly, accurately, and economically. So I would really, really evaluate anything before you do it. That's my opinion, that's it.
Thank you, Joanne. Okay, okay, anybody else? Last questions? Going once, twice, three times. Okay, moving right along. Uh, we're going to the government, that's right, Government Administration Liaisons. Board of Water Supply, do we have anybody else?
Good evening, Chair Robati, and members of the McCully Mo'eele'ee Neighborhood Board and members of the community. I'm Tracy Burgle, and I'm filling in for Stephen Narstrom, who was not able to attend tonight. So, as far as main breaks go for your neighborhood board district, there was one main break that was reported on August 16. It was a three-inch main break, and the address was 1018 Kamoli Lane. As far as general water announcements go, Board of Water Supply wanted to share that we will be observing our Source Protection Week from September 24 through September 30. And what we want to do with this observation is to bring awareness about the importance of protecting our precious drinking water sources. So most of, I'm sorry, all of Oahu's water purely comes from groundwater resources. But here are some ways that you can protect the source. One, conserve and use water efficiently. Check and repair leaks regularly. Use only what you need and don't waste it. Two, properly dispose of household waste. In other words, don't pour it on the ground or down into storm drains. Three, protect our watershed. You can help by staying on designated trails and respect the wildlife. And also, if you have the opportunity, join a community watershed partnership group. With the closure of three water sources near Red Hill, we all need to be responsible stewards to ensure we'll have an adequate supply of safe drinking water, not only today, but for future generations. For more information, you can go to www boardofwatersupply.com源 Let's all do our part and make every drop count. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next month, you'll be doing your five-year plan? That's what I understand, yeah?
My understanding is that, yes, your neighborhood board did request for the presentation.
Any questions for Board of Water Supply? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your kind attention.
Okay, next we have the mayor's representative, Michael Keefe, I think.
Michael Keefe wasn't able to make it, but I have a memo here, one of me...
Did it?
Sure, fireware.
Um, September edition of the Mayor's Highlights Newsletter can be found online at www dot Wanahuwahoo dot org slash newsletter. The following articles are included in my newsletter. There's a message about the devastating wildfire destroyed Lahaina. Um, the new light power at Kaia Voyant Beach Park, also known as Electric Beach, was installed August third. Um, liquor commission's new administrator sell Panchilos, a long time industry leader with years of experience. How the mayor and his administration is following through on decades old promise to redevelop Arona Village in Elwa. Um, Forbes Magazine once again named City County Honolulu as one of the best places to work in Hawaii. And Mary Lewis, administrator of Glazedale and Waikiki Shell announces her retirement from more than thirty years of service. Um, there was a question about, at, at the last meeting about um, a request was made for home, housing and homeless director to speak at a board meeting. And housing and the Department of Community Services said they'll take lead and join online as they have programs and contracts to service individuals experiencing homelessness. Um, housing will gladly join online as additional support. However, they do not have programs and services directly out of their office that support those experiencing homelessness. So if they wanna be put, uh, if you wanna have them, um, present, just you can request them and then put it on the agenda.
Okay, we can't ask any questions, so.
Um, if you wanna ask questions, I can go ahead and forward that to the property departments.
Anybody have any questions for the mayor's rep?
Do I have the handle?
Joanne's got her hand up. Okay, Joanne. Fran? Joanne, I guess not.
Hold on, hold on. I was doing something. So is that Mark O'Keefe?
Yeah, Michael O'Keefe.
Michael O'Keefe, okay. So.
He's not here though.
Huh?
He's not here, he sent a memo.
Oh, is us, is Sarah, what's her name, something, is Sarah Matsuka, is she here? I'll ask the question to her if she comes back on.
Who?
Some, so Denise, is Sarah Matsuka?
No, I have no idea.
Was on, but she's not on the agenda. So if we wanna put, um, have her provide a report or a discussion, then we can put that in the quest to put it on the next agenda.
Well, back to, uh, just, uh, just to the, um, the mayor's rep. Like I said, I've been going to the mayor's office regarding this homeless situation for a couple of times, and I just went down the other day to see what's going on. So basically, you know, everybody, yeah, you feel sorry for the homeless people because they're homeless. But some of them, you know, you kinda reap what you sow in some ways, and some of them don't want help. I have a friend's son who doesn't want help. He's been into shelters so many times, but he will not stay there because he doesn't want any rules. So how can you help people who don't want to help themselves and make it like we're criminalizing them when we're not? We're trying to help them, but if they don't want to help, what do you do to help the community to stay so that it prospers for us as well? It's not about the homeless only, it's about the law-abiding citizens who want to use the park, the sidewalks, and everywhere else. But a lot of places look like trash, and that shouldn't be. So that's just my opinion. You know, you gotta help yourself too. We can't just keep helping people who don't wanna help themselves. There's a lot of, a lot of people in Maui who need a lot of help more than them.
Okay, thank you. Okie dokie. Um, University of Hawaii Manoa. Is Alman here, Alman? Or the representative for UH?
I'll tell him.
Nobody said. Okay. Any chance? Okay. Governor's rep. Governor?
Meeting chair and members of the neighborhood board. This is Matt Devontre, the governor's representative. Um, there were a couple of questions from last month, um, that I looked into. Uh, one was from board member Lee about um, the McCully Mo'eele'ee Library and why there aren't um outlets, electrical outlets, uh, near the study tables. Um, so unfortunately, I wasn't able to get a specific answer to that question. Um, but generally, um, the Department of Accounting and General Services is responsible for doing those renovations, and they'll work with the library system on that. Um, I can put a link in the, the chat about the best way to get in touch uh, with the library system if you have some recommendations about things that are needed, uh, improvements that are needed in the libraries. Um, so that, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't have a more specific answer to, to that question. Um, and then the other question, uh, was asked by Joanne, and it was about, um, the state's homeless coordinator, James Koshiba, and Joanne, I see you on. And um, I believe that James did reach out to you after, um, sometime after the meeting. And that's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions if I can.
Anybody have board, anybody on the board have any questions? Board folks? None? Okay, we'll start with Laura.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, um, Governor's rep. Um, I went to the town hall that the governor had for the, um, initiative, for the housing initiative. And I asked questions ahead of time, and they were not at all addressed or answered. And my question, uh, that's three parts, I guess, is one, um, about one quarter of our land is federal, and certainly most of it is military. Has he gone to the proper uh, federal sources to find out how that um property can be honed down or put up for housing that will be very easy to get to? Two examples, um, Fort Ruger is, and now appealed on a community college. Liloa is now, um, a major, um, place out in west, um, Oahu. And then, um, I mentioned earlier, um, that I saw, um, a few days ago, the ti- tiny houses that are on state property that are, have, have a very nice, I wouldn't call them a Calholy, but whatever it is, that's, that initiative can go almost anywhere and very quickly. And I hope it's done, and the Calholy's, which are more substantial housing, I hope they're being planned. Now, my real question is this. Has, has the governor or his officials dedicated all the land that are what are called remnant parcels? The parcels that can be built on, including the massive amount of property that, that is on government, um, military land to be used for the housing, not taking away from housing in our neighborhoods, but using, utilizing what's already there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and just to clarify, the last question that you had, are you, you mentioned, um, military lands, but do you mean state lands as the governor identified, called state lands?
He would need to go to the federal agencies and ask for that, that federal land to be freed up for housing for our residents. And I think that would be really important. I mean, we can, all of us can look around and identify huge lawns, or I don't wanna lose the lawns, but there are places where people can have their tiny housing or their Calholy housing. There's just so much available that's federal land, and that's where he should tap first before he tries to squeeze in things into our neighborhoods, I think. Thank you.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Joanne? Going one.
I just wanted to respond to the governor's, um, representative. Yeah, James Koshiba did answer me. And he thought that I wanted to put them all in jail, which is not true. I wanna put those who are drug dealing in jail because most of the people who are left in our community, unfortunately, are drug dealers. Okay, they're drug addicts and drug dealers. So you don't want drug dealers in the neighborhood, and they shouldn't be able to get a house because they're drug dealing. And if, you know, they have to help themselves too. This is not just to enable people. We gotta have them get on their feet and help and be a, a, a productive person, uh, pe- people to society. And you know, in the meantime, destroying areas is not what I'm going to be, I'm, can't respect people who come into your parks, come into the sidewalk, and destroy everything so you can't use it. What do we do about that? What about us? How about people looking at the other side? The people who live in this community and who can't do what they normally could do before because their parks and sidewalks and everything else have been destroyed. So you know, he wants to focus on them. What about us? Nobody focuses on the other side, which is us. And that's what gets me frustrated, because the ones, the homeless who want help, they are getting help. These are not the ones who want help. I see them out on the streets.
Okay.
Passing things to one another. So I mean, please, go back and tell that to the governor and James Koshiba too.
I will, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? How many? That's it? Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have city council member Calvin Sev.
Hello, Calvin, this is Melvia for Calvin. I'm half Calvin seven, September newsletter in the chat box. Uh, and yet to leave for another meeting. But I'm also going to put information about the two meetings related to Alawai flood management. September thirteenth next week and November twenty-ninth. You do need to RSVP to um Erin at HawaiiGreenGrowth dot org. That will be also in the chat box. And just a brief, um, summary of three, uh, capital improvement projects from McCully Mo'eele'ee area. All three still at planning design stage. So there'll be, um, Capulani Boulevard, lighting improvements, uh, street improvements. McCully District Park, uh, classroom improvements to the first floor. Uh, and also rehabilitation of streets. University Avenue from South King Street up to Miley Way. So those three are major reports, CIP reports for September. But like I said, they're all in the planning and design stage. Other than that, um, the major concerns from McCully Mo'eele'ee were, um, yes, we've been meeting and talking to Joanne Ochi and John and Becky Fowles about all upon a bridge. And um, also a couple of, um, high rises who are concerned about meeting the fire life safety concerns. So that's pretty much representative, and I really have to uh, salute Louis Galdera for chairing a great committee meeting at Kalo Park last Thursday. I'll help to the extent that our office can. So any questions?
I do have one, Houston Street, are, are they changing the parking structure on that street? Are they putting?
So. So we received a lot of information, and that's also, um, Joanne Ochi's, um, initiative too, to enforce what has always been uh, unimproved sidewalks along Houston from South King to Capulani Boulevard. And it is illegal to park on unimproved sidewalks, and you can't tell because the, it's unimproved, there's no striping to, to show where the private property ends and the sidewalk begins. But that has been a contested area, and people have gone, um, oh, gotten away with illegal parking for like the past ten years and causing congestion. Um, and so that was the initiative that Department of Transportation, Mayor's Office, and HPD did, this is, you don't have to have signage. It's in the ordinance that you cannot park on sidewalks. So that's what happened, and for those who emailed our office, we did send them the ordinance, and we did explain. I think there were over thirty citations between August twenty-ninth to the thirty-first and multiple warnings. So, um, as in any other district, I mean, Kamakia is full of unimproved sidewalks, but you cannot park on shoulders.
I was down there and I looked around, and there's some that you know, you don't, you don't know how far in you can park. I mean, there's, this one truck is parked right next to the building, and he's got a bunch of citations on there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, uh.
Yeah, that's not, you know, you go to the blueprints and the blueprints, your property designates where parking spaces are. This is for.
If I'm a renter, and I don't know, I don't have the, the blueprints for my, my, my house, how do I know that I parked there?
Your landlord or your property manager, yeah, when you're renting, your landlord or your property manager tells you whether your unit has a designated parking space or not. And, and most of, because Ma'Kali is such an old area, uh, most of them do not have sufficient parking on the street or on the property. Yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of a tough situation.
It is.
Sorry, I'm keeping you. Anybody else have questions for councilman right here?
Um, Melvia, Melvia? Um, we here in it, live at the meeting, can't get into the chat box, and by September thirteenth, we won't have seen the minutes yet. So could you please repeat the information about the Alawai meeting?
Okay, uh, the email to RSVP is Erin, E R I N at Hawaii Green Growth.
Hawaii Green, G R E E N, Growth?
Yes, all one word, HawaiiGreenGrowth dot org.
And where and what time is the meeting?
Well, they're online, so.
Hawaii Green Growth?
Yeah, so September thirteenth is one thirty to three PM on Alawai flood management data exploration and modeling. And November twenty-ninth, one thirty to three PM is water monitoring uh, informed watershed resilience workshop.
Okay. No more question, questions, questions? One question. You have to come up here. For the, for Councilman Sev.
Well, my regards to Councilman Sev, I, I, I remember him from Palolo, excuse me, um. This is not to do, uh, it's just, this is the only segment I'm able to ask a question specific to the gardens that's, uh, under the city and county. Um, with the public parks. Um, do you know how that process goes as far as, uh, working with different bodies to try to create a new space? Like was mentioned before, there are a lot of lots that may be or may not be available for use, but I'm just curious about the process of that, Michael. Um, so yeah, I'm just curious. Um, I, I don't think you're necessarily the person, but it's just you're one of the city and county representatives segments. Thank you so much.
You're talking about community gardens?
Oh, yes, yes. Uh, I don't know if that's Parks and Rec or, um.
It is. It is, it is under Parks and Recreation, but there are a lot of vacant parcels that are designated to Parks and Recreation as well. And I don't know, it's, it's just, um, a burden to keep the grass mowed primarily. If those small parcels can be used as community garden sites, that would be a, a productive use of vacant land. But that would be through, uh, Parks and Recreation, and if you call our office, we can submit an inquiry if you have a specific uh, plot or public land that you have identified in your area. You said you're from Palolo?
Um, sorry, I, I previously was a resident in Palolo Valley, and so I love you. I'm also of the unhoused, sheltered homeless people. So mahalo, Ms. Joanne, for your comments. Um, as I'm, I'm very mindful of my space as well, but I, I do acknowledge you directly. I'm sorry, I don't mean to speak, uh, I'm not supposed to have spoken to someone directly. But I mahalo you for your, uh, input, because it informs my, my space and place in this community. I, I, I went to Lunalilo for a little bit, but I, I'm also from Palolo Valley. Thank you, yes, yes.
Okay. We'll keep in touch.
One more, Joanne, uh.
Laura, thank you.
Me?
Me?
Yes.
No, 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 solid joint.
We, um, we did it at the Mo'eele'ee Japanese Cemetery. It's a remnant parcel strip along Kuylai. And I went to the, um, um, Parks and Rec, whatever, filled out everything. You have to have the TMK, which is the boundaries of where that remnant parcel is. And then you have to, it's a, you're Kulianna, you're taking care of it, and that you can't have storm drains that are, uh, uh, put plants on top of it. And we just say, respect the garden, respect the cemetery, and we try to keep it as nice as we can, but come on by. I'll be there tomorrow, after, tomorrow morning.
Cool. Okay. Joanne.
Oh, okay, hi. Hi, Melvia. Thanks for meeting me the other time, and I did get some feedback from the police department. And, um, certain police officers are really monitoring our street, so it has gotten a lot better. And as far as Paul, you know, you said it's a tough situation, it's really not. There is a law, there are laws on the books. But till now, people have gotten away with not having to follow the laws because nobody says anything. And if we don't. And if we don't keep, you know, if we, we have laws, but nobody's enforcing it, then the community, the whole island, the whole state, you know, is going to fall apart, which it is right now, because there's no law and order at all. People are not following the law. There are laws, but they're not enforced. So we gotta enforce these laws in order to have people living in a community where it's respectable, where it can prosper, it can be safe. You know, it's been, it's been crazy, this street has been crazy for years. And nobody cares. And as far as a renter is concerned or a owner, everybody knows you don't own from the curb on to about six feet in a while, most people would know because where else are people gonna walk? But people take advantage of this, so somebody has to tell them not to take advantage of this. It's not, it's, it's, there needs to be a sidewalk because people are walking on the street and they're gonna get hit and killed one of these days.
No, no. Okay, that was.
I saw Richard Oheisa's hand up.
Okay.
Hi, Richard.
I don't know, Richard?
Hi, Melvia.
Hi.
No, I, you know, I'm Richard Oheisa, I live on Eisenberg Street. And I, I've been hearing all the different things going on. And my big beef is Eisenberg, number one, has quite a bit of parking. And a lot of the tour companies are using it as their own parking facility or base. They switch off cars and there's tons of limos, stretch limos and tour vans. And one was right in front of the St. Louis alumni, it moved today. I'm surprised, I've been, I've been telling Melvia's office, she knows, I've been telling, I called nine one one, non-emergency. I did three eleven. And some of these things that we follow are kind of a joke, you know, because the response is really uh, you know, like a limbo kind of thing, no answers to it. And then I also submitted a picture of Bolo Dome. I'm surprised that no one has said anything about a fire there the other night, couple of nights before. I mean, you know, six engines were there.
Okay, you have to wrap it up, Richard.
Okay, okay, okay. Well, I just wanted to, you know, alert that the fire department didn't say anything about it, even the police, you know, and wow, I mean, it was the homeless, I know, because I see them going in every morning. You know, and there's no electricity in the Bolo Dome. Because I've been dealing with the D H H L, okay? So that's it, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Joanne.
Thank you, Richard.
Joanne is the last one now.
I agree with you, Richard, it was the homeless and that's why we need to get them off the streets to some place where they can be. Excuse me, are you interrupting me?
No, not at all.
Well, then I can hear your voice behind me. So if you don't allow me to speak, I can't speak without your interruption or sarcasm or criticism or whatever. That's not your job to criticize, if you don't agree with me, that's fine. But stop making all kind of noise behind what I'm saying because I, that's disrespectful to me. And I haven't been disrespectful to you, I talked to you about this. Anyway, that's all.
Anybody else have anything to say? Uh, no with Calvin Seh's representative? No? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Next, Representative Andrew Garrett.
Hold on, I see that's a representative.
Okay, we're gonna continue on. Representative Scott Nishimoto.
Hello, Chair and Board, this is Taylor, I'm speaking on behalf of Representative Scott Nishimoto. First, we wanted to come out and address the fire that Richard brought up earlier. This has been the top of our priority this week. So there was a fire on, I believe, Monday night within the Bolo Dome building. And thankfully, the fire department, they were able to control the fire before it went outside of the building. So it was maintained within the building. But, you know, my boss, he wrote a very like strong stance and a letter to the D H H L because this is an ongoing issue. As Richard knows, we've been trying to communicate and, you know, like work it out with D H H L. And so we're asking for concrete plans for, you know, the long term and like how that's gonna affect Bolo Dome in the future. There, you know, there is plans to demolish the site shortly, but there is an issue with funding that they're still trying to work out. So, you know, anyone that's living on Eisenberg will be sending out a mail very soon to update the situation and Richard has also gotten our emails. So, but yeah, if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to take it back to my boss.
Okay, anybody have any questions for representative? One right here.
Just a very quick one for the representative or anyone who knows. What's the timetable for redevelopment of that site? Does anyone know?
She should. What's the timetable for that?
Well, originally, they were intending to demolish it from like July or August. But there is issues, as you know, with many state projects. And it's like, it's funded by different pockets, so it seems like they're having a little bit of issues securing the funding. But I do hope that to demolish will start soon. The property developer Stanford Car, they seem to be all hands on deck on this project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Daisy?
Thank you, Chair. Hi, Taylor, do you know what big project is happening right next to Maple Garden on Eisenberg Street, across the street from the stadium? I noticed that there are several businesses there and it's all down and something's gonna go up. It's huge. Do you have any idea if it's gonna be a condo or some other building business? I don't know.
Are you talk, well, there is another property there that is also owned by D H H L. I believe that's the site you're talking about. Uh, Richard may know, Richard, do you know what she's talking about?
Wait, wait, how you control?
I'm sorry, I'm not too sure, but let me, I'll message you for your phone number, Daisy, and then I'll do some follow up just to make sure I know what you're talking about.
Okay, it's right next to her to Maple Garden. All of a sudden, it used to be some kind of Korean Taekwondo or some kind of, and some other business and that's all done. And then right now is there's fence around it, so I'm not sure what is to be planned for that area. It's kind of huge, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Daisy?
Yes.
This is Richard.
Yes.
It, it was a Taekwondo organization. And I think it's an affiliate of that Taekwondo club. And they're gonna be building a sort of like athletic kind of thing over there. It's not gonna be a condo, no. That's what I, I, yeah. It's gonna be more like, it's right next to the dental building, right?
Um, yeah, and then, well, I'm not sure what other business, but it was right next door to Maple Garden, so you can't.
Yeah, Maple Garden, that place, and then Manoa Dental or something like that. I live right over there.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it still seems to be under private property, so no development has been spoken about.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, I was just curious, thank you.
Same thing like the one next to Makali Bicycle. They're, they're making a building over there and the homeless are living there while they're building it.
Okay, Richard, we gotta move along here.
Okay, I just wanted to say that, that is L N L owned.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, they're making a building over there, yeah.
Uh-oh, we get scolded again. Okay, Richard?
Thank you.
Okay, Joanne?
So Taylor, can you ask Representative Nishimoto to go and check the Moilili baseball field bathrooms again? And to try to find a way so that the homeless are not congregating there, not hanging their laundry up on the fences? Because, I mean, hey, we're not living in Kuhio Park Terrace, but it kind of looks like that over there. And I've called the police about that because, yeah, I mean, it looks like a laundromat. And I don't think that we should be having people hanging blankets and underwear and everything else on the fences. You know, this is a, this is an ongoing issue. We're trying to make this community beautiful if possible. And so if you guys can go over there, think of something to do. And also I know that the library has the fence around because the homeless were there. And I mean, it's, it's unfortunate that it has to have a fence around it because it kind of looks ugly. And maybe you guys could paint that building or do something or something else that would beautify that area, make it more welcoming. But I don't know, I mean, it's unfortunate that fence, I mean, that gate has to be over there, but I can't think of anything else you can do. Okay, maybe you have some ideas.
Okay, does somebody else have a question? Anybody else have a question? Every once, twice, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor. Next, Representative Adrian Tam.
Good evening, everyone, this is Flora on behalf of Rep Tam. I posted our monthly newsletter in the chat. We'll be having a District Twenty Four Town Hall on September twenty eighth at the Waikiki Community Center from five thirty to seven thirty P M. We have a whole host of panelists there. And we're asking, if possible, if you'd like to join us to submit your questions ahead of time. I'm submitting a link in, also into the chat, where you can submit your questions ahead of time. That's to help us sort of get an idea of what people, the issues they want to address. And so we can give our panelists some time to prepare ahead of time. We also have a Waikiki Community Cleanup this Sunday. It's gonna, we're gonna head off from Centennial Park in Waikiki. So if I hear there's a few Waikiki constituents there, if you'd love to join us, we would love to have you. That will start at nine A M at Centennial Park. And I'm here for any questions about anything you all might have concerns about.
Okay, anybody on the board have questions? Okay. Come on in. Sorry.
Any of the speakers that are on Zoom here, and if they put anything on the chat as Erin, we can't see it, so is.
I just wrote that down. I've got the chat and then I'll put it in the Google Drive.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, anybody, anybody else? Okay, moving right along, Senator Lesi Hall. Yes.
On behalf of Senator Lesi Hara and Carol Fukunaga, they're busy right now arranging the program, it's gonna be this Saturday. So they're busy at work, I got a call from them just before.
Thank you. That works out good. Okay, next, Senator Sharon Morawaki.
Uh, hello, Charles, I'm sorry.
All right, I'm actually here on behalf of Senator Fukunaga. But Charles can go ahead.
Wait, 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 just a second.
Oh, no, you, um, please go ahead.
Yes.
Hi, it's Claire on behalf of Senator Fukunaga. We had distributed our newsletter to the board and I believe it's in the Google Drive as well. But I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen for everyone over there at the room so they can see it as well. Just give me a second. Okay, so in this month's report, we had actually started tabulating the results that we've gotten from the online survey that we had sent out in our district-wide newsletter. And for folks in Makiki, it looks like for one of the questions we had, what are you most concerned about in your neighborhood? That being homeless encroaching in areas being number one. And number three is gonna be pedestrian safety. For that second question, for the third question that we had in our survey, our survey, sorry. Which of these choices are you most willing to support? We had permanent supportive housing as being number one for Makiki residents, building urban rest stops and providing community health crisis. And in response to the Maui Lahaina fires, we were also looking at challenges in Tantalus and urban Honolulu, given that there is like hotspot areas with like a lot of invasive Guinea grass and we're like looking at various options to address these. So I am here for additional questions that I can take back to the senator. Thank you.
Questions for the senator? Anybody? Okay, thank you very much for coming, for sharing with us. Thanks, Claire.
Hi, Charles Nishimoto on behalf of Senator Morawaki. You have a link to our newsletter and if you have any questions, I can take it back to her. Obviously, we have the event coming up on Saturday and she plans on joining everyone there. Thanks.
Any questions? Um, I think you see up there, you'll see one of these up there. We have one question.
Saturday event, you know, there's, it's from the city?
I don't know. Laura, do you know if any, we have a question here for you. Ask Laura, she's the one that's.
Oh, the question was, did you, are there representatives from the city attending an event on Saturday?
I only know the sponsors that are at the bottom, but there could be others. It's had to do with the time, timing to get the fire out. So I'm, I'm not exactly sure, you know, tomorrow.
I'm sorry, could someone please repeat the question I wasn't?
No, no, it was, sorry. Nobody had a question, that's it.
Okay. Okay.
Right, yeah, it was just that anybody know if there's gonna be any other city representatives at the meeting on September ninth?
Um, I believe that my boss informed Roger Morton that it is happening and yeah, that's, so he may or may not attend.
Oh, okay.
Janelle has a handle.
Janelle.
Hi, this is Councilmember Seh's office, I'm gonna be attending on his behalf. And we also sent the information to Director Morton's office, but also we don't know if he's, if he's attending or having someone from his team attend. We can follow up as well.
Thank you. Charles, thank you, by the way.
Thank you.
Okay, any, I mean, we're moving right along. Okay, now we're going to new business. Uh, we have condo owner protection resolution. We have Karen and Greg, gonna be.
Actually, the title should be resolution supporting consumer protection bills for condo owners. And I hope that everybody on the board and Wiki, if you're hopefully still online, got a copy that Lyndon sent out of the proposed resolution. um got a copy that Lyndon sent out of the proposed resolution uh mid last month. And kind of as a, a cover uh description of a, if you, if you saw that already, just briefly, this is the same resolution that two other neighborhood boards have passed, um uh Kakako uh and uh Waikiki Boards, uh Alawana Kakako. And the idea is to support condominium motors owners in the Mokali Mo'eeleli area, but also more broadly in consonance with the, with other neighborhood boards to show support um around Oahu for these issues. So I was hoping that some of the um, the legislators, representatives are still there. Um I sent them also an email this afternoon to talk about it. Um, and I didn't get any questions. Uh hopefully you've had an opportunity to look at the uh, at the proposed resolution. I also have um a person from the Waikiki neighborhood who was the one who introduced and worked through passage at the Waikiki Board, um who's available for any questions too, so.
I have a prepared statement if I'm allowed to.
That be okay?
You're right. Oh, yeah, sure.
It's not too long.
Please, Sam.
So uh my name is Greg Masaken. I live in Waikiki. And I have a prepared statement regarding um why I feel this resolution is very important for uh every neighborhood board to pass so that our legislators understand that it's a very important concern. So mahalo for the opportunity to present this very important resolution, which is meant to help all condominium owners throughout Hawaii. There's an urgent need to have better consumer protections for condominium owners and to have a state agency that owners can go to to address disputes they have with their association boards, management companies, um in, you know, including concerns of mismanagement, malfeasance, retaliation, violations of statutes five fourteen B, and the association's governing documents. The same resolution was adopted, as Karen mentioned, by the Waikiki Neighborhood Board in July. And an almost identical resolution was adopted by the Alawana Kakako Neighborhood Board in February. To emphasize just how urgent this issue has become, on April sixth of this year, Civil Beat published a story titled Hawaii Property Management Giant Under Scrutiny. The story is about one of the largest condominium management companies in Hawaii, operating without a license from January first of this year through early April over three months. You would think that after being unlicensed for a few weeks, that someone at the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs or the Real Estate Commission would have noticed and initiated an investigation. Unfortunately, that's not the case, and the complaint came from outside of the D C C A and Real Estate Commission. This is also the management company that oversees my condominium association. And we voted them out last year, but there's been no action taken to replace them by the previous board of the majority of the current board. I was recently elected to my condominium association's board in March as treasurer, and I am now dealing with board member misconduct and malfeasance and much more. To highlight why better consumer protection measures are needed, condominium maintenance fees and insurance costs are going up exponentially due to mismanaged associations and deferred maintenance. This is not sustainable, and our Kupuna and others on fixed budgets could be forced to sell their homes or lose them to foreclosure. Homeowners who complain to the association boards or management companies are often ignored and sometimes retaliated against. Owners need a way to address abuse of power by association board members or management company agents. Many association board members do not understand their fiduciary duty, duty of care, the business judgment rule, Hawaii revised statutes by fourteen B, or even their own governing documents. Association attorneys and managing agents tend to follow along for the ride when bad decisions are made by the board, most likely because they are being paid. Uh mediation statistics have proven, and and there's a section on mediation that's within this, the um the resolution, so there's more specifics there. Um mediation statistics have proven the majority are not successful, and the ones that show closed or resolved have no published details to know if they were in fact resolved in a satisfactory manner. To highlight this even further, a recent Real Estate Commission condominium bulletin published in March shows eighteen mediations filed. Sixteen of these show mediated no agreement. The other two do not have a disposition. Mediations are also costly. Uh even though the D C C A is telling you to go to mediation, it costs three hundred and seventy-five dollars to file for them.
You gotta wrap it up.
So to conclude, uh as I mentioned earlier, I was, you know, recently elected to my association's board of directors, and I have a full plate to deal with there. But I also co-wrote two embudsman's office measures related to condominiums, HOAs, and plant community associations. These measures were introduced this year as HB one seventy-eight and HB fifteen oh one. And I hope that our legislators will support them in twenty twenty-four and schedule committee hearings. I also intend to introduce revised measures and new measures related to better consumer protections for condominium, condominium owners. I hope that our legislators will listen more to what condominium owners have to say. Uh this resolution, if adopted by more neighborhood boards, will send a clear message.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, motion, that's right. Is there a motion to pass this? This resolution?
I'll make a motion to pass the resolution. Go ahead.
Two D second.
I'll second the motion.
Who's that? What, Wiki?
Yes. Discussion. I'm on discussion.
Discussion for this one?
I read it, but everything's okay. The part that I think might have kind of been in the resolution is the voting and the way it's found, the, the two, say you have one, two, three, four, five, sort of point, but a second base. Two of them have to do with internal voting. Okay, it's fair, but.
You want me to get up to answer the question?
Just real quick.
Yeah, yeah.
Just a real quickie.
So I, and I understand the question because that, that came up at the Waikiki Board also. So some associations use proxy voting. Others may use a ballot. Uh I, I lived in the Bay Area for a while, so in California, usually there's a ballot, like we have a ballot for the national uh and and local elections that we have. Um proxies where I live are the way they establish voting. And we're trying to get it so you can have, you know, proxies might always be there, but you want to be able to have a ballot so you can see your candidates and check off a box. And where I live, we don't have that. So there needs to be reform to, to address that. That's where abuse of um proxies comes into play and proxy matters.
And since we think that the um, the resolution um on our city platform is to give it to the correct passion?
I believe this, this state, yeah, if, if legislation is passed, that can modify the statutes that currently exist. And it can require a ballot, absolutely. That's what we're trying to address. But all of these are just suggestions of how to improve it, and that obviously, you know, obviously, this is just a resolution.
But one and four seems to be the embudsman licensure.
Correct, embudsman and licensure. I just mentioned why the licensure is, not just for the company, but for the community.
Okay, sorry, that's it.
Okay. Wiki, do you have a question?
Uh, don't have a question. I mean, I think um I'm supportive of the resolution and think that the way that condos are run, there's a lack of oversight and transparency and, you know, so fully supportive.
Got a vote? We'll vote on this one? Yeah, yeah. All those in favor? Or one we? Yeah, all of them in favor? We just look around, means.
Don't you have a favor?
Yes.
Yes. All of us in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Against? Okay, pass.
Abstentions.
Any abstentions? Sorry about that. Okay, yeah, there you go. Approved. Done deal, okay. All right, I'm just, we got, you guys. Okay, next, resident community comments. For brief mention of items or concerns or comments that are not on the agenda. Anybody anything they want to say or, okay, let's start right here.
Yeah. Oh, did, did you want to speak? It was just real quick. I just wanted to see if we can put.
Um, we'll work on that one. Let's see what he can do. Okay. I knew I'd see him.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to report to the board that uh a, a few days ago, Laura and I went to another meeting at uh about Pohua Ridge, the new development they want to build over here. And we heard the discussion, and from what I heard, I, I, I kind of think it's a favorable uh building. It, it doesn't seem to be uh on their order of Kuilei Place or anything like that. They are asking for an exemption of a hundred foot higher than, than zone, but it's mostly, it's gonna be rental. Uh, the, the most uh people that were against it at that meeting were concerned about the uh traffic. And uh it is in an awkward location for traffic because people want to go onto the freeway
Right.
and, and, and they're not gonna be able to, coming out of that building, you won't be able to get on the freeway. But uh I think there's only two hundred and something units, and they're, they're aiming mostly for senior citizens. It's all rentals, and they want to start out with affordable uh eighty percent or something like that below AMI. And uh from the presentation, I, that was the second time I was at the presentation. They had one once before, and since it wasn't very well attended, they had it again. Calvin Seay was at both times, and there were some other uh legislators there this second time. And uh I just, I, I think it's not a bad deal. I, I support it. So that, and if you, anybody wants more information, they have a website. Uh, I don't know the exact address, but you could Google Pohua Ridge and you could get there.
I think we got, we got one in the mail or online.
Uh huh.
Somebody sent me something about that online. No. Yeah.
So that's all I wanted to say.
Okay. Anybody else have? Anybody else have anything to say? No?
I can just say one. Chair, yeah, about the floor ridge, um I suggested a um a, a variety of park, of um street lights that are done in other cities across United States where you would have something that would go forward for the freeway or forward to Kaila La Road or or forward to straight on to O'Wai La Road and everything, and that could probably help that parking situation pretty much.
Perfect.
So, so they're, they're, I think they were willing to listen to me when I said it and probably listened to other people too. But other than that, they really, they need grants, they need waivers or whatever it is, but they really truly seem to be about affordable housing. You know, the falsehoods of most of the other, the Kuilei Place and others, but they really seem to care about uh really truly affordable.
Focus of most, most, most other places is profit.
Yes. Okay. Anybody else have anything? Anybody? Nobody? Wow. Sorry about that.
Hi, I have my hand raised.
Oh, sorry. I didn't, we didn't see it. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
No, sorry. Um, yeah, I'm concerned about the traffic because there is one lane. There are, there's, there are three lanes. One goes into U H, one goes to the freeway, and then one lane goes past Pohua Ridge. They are claiming the exit, the entrance and exit will not, um, people will not try to cross into the H one west. But it is, I just am very concerned that cars are gonna try to go to H one west, cut across because it is so close to that property. Um, the, it is, I could see a lot of accidents. Already there are accidents there. Um cars making that turn speed, and they end up crashing into the guardrail. They've um hit tra- on the um electric light poles. Um, you know, the wooden poles have gotten crashed into. Um it is, I can see a traffic disaster. And they claim that there was a traffic study, but it was inadequate. It was done by somebody that they hired. I'm very concerned um that one lane. Already there, in the, there's so much traffic um for people that live in that area to get out of their driveways, to get out of those little roads. Um, it is so such, um, it's so congested already. It's a huge bottleneck.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead.
I, I think, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I think the exit from the new building will be past the point where you could turn on to the H, H one entrance. So I think they'd have difficulty cutting across and, and making it onto that on-ramp.
It's maybe five feet past? That's what I'm concerned about.
I'm not sure. I think maybe a little further, and they, they mentioned something about they're, we're gonna put possibly something in the median there to prevent it. Yeah. They wouldn't last long.
Yes.
So, so what you're saying is that the entrance or the entrance, it's gonna be on a road that goes towards swimming society?
Yes.
Yes. The entrance, the entrance will be first and the exit will be just at the edge of the property.
Okay, so the entrance will be able to make it before the H one.
Yes, yes. Correct.
Uh, anybody else have any comments about? No, 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 you, this is, this is it, yes.
Come up here, cause I'm.
Yeah, we gotta.
Hi, uh, this is my first time at the neighborhood thing, and I was just trying to observe, and I think you mentioned a gentleman named Michael Keath. Is that like a homeless coordinator?
Michael, oh, keep, he's the, the mayor's representative.
Okay, for the homeless situation.
That was part of it.
Just the mayor, okay. Well, I have some concern about regarding the homelessness and particularly along Arroba Street. So um, there's been issues and stuff, and you know, it's not like we're apart where, you know, there's at least a bathroom and stuff. It just kind of like, just, yeah, dude, they're hedging. I, I, I feel like all were replacing stuff. And um, they have to hang out here, and I know that I've seen cops just like trolling and stuff, and they don't really do anything. For example, like one gentleman is like living in this car, like he parks it. He has two cars, and he sleeps in either one of them at the night, and then he takes one of them like out and stuff, but he parks the other car over there. That's been going on for years, and he's still doing that to this day. And um, yeah, I'm just wondering like what's the proper procedure for that? Like, what's considered like homelessness? Like, is it like to, to coffee, evacuate him from this place and stuff? Um, the other thing that I have concerns about is like, I've seen some people feeding cats around here too, and of course they also poop over our place and everything. It's also, and we have a storm drainage there too, so I'm pretty sure it goes into the storm drain. Um, so that's another concern. And my last one is, there's um a stoplight across or just like between the, between Zippy's and that um mini mall and stuff. That one is more like a suggestion. I've seen so many people run over that light, and it's pretty dangerous. I'm wondering if there's any way to like prevent that, like maybe a speed bump, like what they did.
Where?
Uh, Zippy McCully, there's that light that goes across the street from Zippy's to the other side. There's like a donut shop over there.
Yeah.
But yeah, that's like people just runs that, speeding down that. So it's pretty dangerous, like, yeah, I'm like always scared crossing that street and everything. So, thank you, everybody.
That's great. Thanks for coming by. Yeah.
That Joab has a handle.
Okay, uh, Joanne?
To the, to the guy who was just talking, if he wants to get a hold of a homeless coordinator, he can get, well, that's probably the city and county where he's talking about Al Jaroba. He can call the city and county like Denise Iseri Matsubata. And then for the governor's side, the homeless coordinator is James Koshiba. So if you look him up. And they're not supposed to be in the car. You should call the police. I mean, they, you know, they're so afraid to do things because the A C L U is planning to sue, but you know, again, they're not supposed to be living like that, and they're not supposed to be causing all that mess and everything else. So it, the community has to be thought of as well. So. So you can call those two people, one for the city and county, Denise Iseri Matsubara or, or James Koshiba. And as far as affordable housing and the Kuile Place and all that, sometimes I, it's sad to say, but I have renters across the street in affordable old folks home. I tell the lady, please stop feeding the cats. What she does is keep feeding the cats. Cats come into my yard, poop diarrhea, poop, you know, all kind of stuff. Go on to my friend's cover, rips it apart. I keep asking her. So one, sometimes I get frustrated because people, when they're renting out, if they care about the neighborhood, fine. But if they don't, then it gets really frustrating because they can, they can move. I can't move. Well, I could, but they can, they can go out. But they, you know, they're going to come into a residence and just cause problems. I don't want them in our neighborhood. That's me.
Thank you. Anybody else? We got one back there. Thank you for serving, by the way. Just to let you know that. Yeah, come on up.
If they're a housing.
Oh, cool. And he's a sergeant also.
Hello, everybody. And I have to be like that because I know that I would like to address everyone. You know, um, this is my first time over here and one of the reasons why I'm here because I want to, I want to know my community. I live over here, Algoroba and I'm glad that, that he stood up and he kind of mentioned all that situation that we're living here in Algoroba pretty much. But I know that someone said over here about the, the police. Okay, so what happened with the police sometimes is that they come and they try to talk to the the homeless, but the homeless are getting smart when we leave. They kind of see when the police are going to come and they kind of leave, but they come back. So, and sometimes, I'm not saying that the police are not doing their job. But I think that, that it's going to be, we have to be more, more, more strong on, on, on the homeless situation because I have two daughters and I'm afraid sometimes that, that sometimes they come into houses that are vacant and we cannot stop them. So we call the police, sometimes they come, they, they walk away and then they keep coming. So how can we do that? Not only that, we have a situation also that everybody knows about drops. And I, I understand that sometimes they try to legalize them here and there. But it's tough when you see like, like, like people try to, you know, walking back and forth, you know, and you, you can smell. And it's, and it's sad because like I said again, I have two daughters that I have to protect. And so how can we address that to the police so that way we'll be able to have a, a better, a better neighbor, more secure? To secure our neighbor because it's not just me. I'm pretty sure that most of the neighbors are having the same situation. But sometimes they don't speak up because they try to do their best, but it's not enough. That's what I, thank you.
Joanne?
Just wanted to give a suggestion to the person who just spoke up. If you can go down to the mayor's office, call your governor. If they don't answer, go down, knock on their door. That's what I do. You know, if they're not going to answer me, I go directly to their office. I've gotten appointments and directly met with the mayor and council people. Because you know, if you do it by email, sometimes they don't answer you. But if you show up in person, they have no choice but to answer you. And as far as the police are concerned, like I said, they do help. Take pictures. They have to see what's going on. So take pictures of all the homeless, whatever they're doing. I take a lot of pictures of them. And see, you know, like I said, I, I sound like I really hate the homeless. It's not that. I do want to help those who want to help themselves. But when the homeless are in this area causing a lot of destruction, like you should see our toilet here at the Moilili baseball field is horrible. Like I said, hanging laundry, just making the place a mess that nobody else can use it. That, then I don't, I, I, it just, I can't, I can't agree with that. Plus, you know, they're getting, they offer them help. One lady spat on the court person and the police. She was under the orange bridge by university and King. Okay, so they come in, they're trying to be nice and ask her if you need help. And then she spits on them. Okay, she's not in her right mind. So you're going to allow somebody to just sit under there, spitting on people? I mean, so yeah, call, take pictures. I take pictures, I send it in. I just keep being persistent. That's the only way something's going to happen. It gets tiring after a while. You know, but you know, when they got the ACLU trying to file lawsuits and this and that, it doesn't make sense. If the ACLU wants to do something, then help, help with the problem for the community as well. Not just for the homeless, but for the general public as well too. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Lewis?
Just real quick, so the, you talked about it at the houseless meeting. The other things that you said even more difficult is the fact that our HPD is not social worker. And so their ability to do something to arrest them, that's the most it's so, it's so strong. And what happens is they go to court and the judge throws out any misdemeanors or even tells them to tell the cop that he's wasting their time. So it's not even, it's not even at the grassroots level anymore. It's not, it's past HPD. It's past our elected officials. It has to do with the way that we criminalize our people. And our justice system is not going to criminalize those that are homeless. And that's just what we have to live with. And so that's one of our biggest problems we came up with during our meeting.
I agree with that. I agree.
At least offered to the houseless people, yes, they need medical attention. Do you need any medical? And if they refuse, that's their business. But if they do offer that.
Yeah, exactly.
I lived in San Francisco for a number of years before the apocalypse that they have now. Which I can only follow that because it is, but I, I did a lot of homeless advocacy or assistance with people in the community. And they have something there and I assume they still have it. I haven't checked recently. But it's called the homeless outreach team, the HOT team. And it's a group of people that engage with the homeless and really engage. They have social workers, they have psychiatric assistants. They'll go out with two, three people and if they do need an officer or if there's a violent situation or whatever, we'll bring that, that officer. But they really help to bring them to places to get assistance.
I might be wrong, but I think a couple of years ago, we had the same thing in this town.
Yeah, I know court is here, but I, I feel like court is a little, I don't know if they.
It was better before, I'll tell you that.
Something doesn't wait right with court because I keep hearing about it and then I don't hear good stories. There was a lot of good stories in San Francisco and I can even give you some examples of mine with that group that you're part of this. Just sounds to me like it's not trained, is it?
Yeah. Yeah. I'm getting stoned. Okay, last question. Well, come on up here.
You know, it, it just sounds to me that like the police aren't trained to do those kind of remediation, those facilitation with the homelessness and everything. So I'm wondering, is there anybody that we can advocate to that like would shed light on those kind of situation where we, I mean, I don't, I don't like, like confrontation with these people or these folks and stuff, a little less fortunate. And you know, I, I do agree with some of the things that Joanne said, but I don't want to like pacify them. It's like, you know, like specific group of people, but more like individuals, you know, like some of these folks do need help and.
And how do we give as well?
Yeah, exactly. So I, I think that's a very tough situation to be in. But I do think that like we need more advocacy to like the police officers to like how to facilitate and just remediate the situation.
I think that paying a visit to the mayor and the governor's office, phone calls just might help.
And also to.
Come on up. Come on up. Okay. Let's continue on then.
I have a question. I have another chance, right?
Okay, last one.
Okay, so as far as the homeless are concerned, like I said, my hus, my cousin used to be a homeless coordinator. So I heard a lot from him. But anyway, a lot of the homeless that are out there right now are not the ones who want to get help. So that you got to realize they don't want to get help because they're free to do whatever they want to do on the streets. If you're put into a facility or somewhere else where there's regulations and rules, they don't want to follow them. Especially if you're taking drugs. Most of these people are drug addicts. How do you stop them from taking drugs? It's making these drugs, cleaning these drugs illegal. I don't know why this country allows people and they give drug addicts more drugs, you know, to help them with their drug addiction. I, I have a, like I said, my friend's son has been a drug addict. He actually went to Puna Ho School and he's been a drug addict since he's 18. She's tried to get him into so many facilities. He doesn't want to go there because he doesn't want to follow the rules. So he goes out, he gets $300 in, I think, food stamps. He sells it to somebody for $150, which is the, you know, that's your tax money and he gets more drugs. I'm hearing it, I, I, this is my, this is a good friend of mine. And so, I mean, if you're going to have people that don't want to get help, what do you do? You know, you, you saying that the less fortunate, they're not, he, his mother does well. He's not less fortunate in as far as money is concerned, but he doesn't want the help. What do you do when they don't want the help?
Okay, we have to move along now. Okay, sorry about that. Okay.
Hi, thank you. Yes, I just wanted to say, you know, I have a lot of respect for houseless people because any one of us could be houseless one day. And it's really important as voters that we really look at what Governor Green is doing with this housing proclamation and, and look carefully at, you know, is he really serving houseless people? Is he really serving low income and working class people? Actually, I feel like he is endangering all of us with his housing emergency proclamation because his housing developments are a, it's in favor of the developers and it, there is no income, there are no income restrictions within his housing proclamation. So I think it's really important, yeah, we should be calling the governor and asking him to do more for houseless people and low income and working class people. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Got a question here. Come on up, come on up, come on up.
I'm a little bit puzzled that so much time was spent tonight on talking about the homeless because I thought there was a special committee formed and I actually went there last week. I, I drove an hour around Calo Park, Kalo Park on University in the dark. I couldn't find it. I gave up. But I asked five people and everybody sent me a different direction, but I don't want to digress. Anyway, I made a real effort to be at that meeting because I think it's an important problem. And I thought it was formed so that there won't be time spent at the regular meetings talking about the homeless.
It's just in general. It's just in general. So we're talking about specific homeless issues that specifically do with like certain circumstances like our road is free. But in general, in the community, we talked about the things that I went over and I've been in.
Yeah, so I'm, so yes, I wanted to say, I, I plan on going to the meeting again. Also, I don't know Joanne, but now I'm a little scared. But I just want to encourage all the people who seem to be interested and I'm really interested to come to the next meeting. That I was.
Have you, yes, love to have you. Thank you.
So, Calo Park is, is not the easiest place to find. It's located on South East Street. Main Street and you go right around Hux Alley and go up and then you go in.
Behind Hux Alley.
Yeah. There's the overpass, right? And then if you go in on Varsity Street, you go on Varsity Street and then turn a little bit to get right to where the underpass is. Just where the big gas falls were, two huge gas falls were there for years.
But the problem is parking.
Oh my God, that is so.
Okay.
Calo Park where the gentleman who spoke it all last couple months lives.
Yes, exactly.
You know, I do do this, I had to tell him what I did was need to make a little or make it clear.
Okay.
I don't know how.
Okay, we're going over time now. That's right, I know. We stopped to finish everything. It's our homework. Next is, oh, sorry. Anybody else have anything they wanted to say? That was not fair of me to do that.
Me. Do you see my hand?
Yeah, sorry. I'll do it the next meeting, Joanne.
No, I just wanted to tell her she doesn't have to be afraid of me. I'm just different in my opinion. I'm not a liberal, so I'm very conservative of my ideas. So there's no need to be afraid. It's just a difference of opinion.
Okay, okay. Alrighty, next. Next, approval of meeting, meetings for last, for Thursday, August the 3rd. We do this one? Any corrections on the August 3rd agenda? Approval of meeting? Meetings? Motion? Any objections? Nope. Passes, okay. Housekeeping, pertinent material arriving and agenda after our agenda deadline. Somebody wanted me to put something on here for for next meeting or October meeting. Call Stanford Car, that's it. Yeah, I got it over there too. That's a raid. Oh, no. I reject objections for that one. Okay. Okay, discussion on the next agenda regarding federal meeting online. We have to, yeah. Book your item pickup by appointment only. It's got the email address and the phone number. Reporting neighborhood issues. That's one. Call the mayor, call the government. Next regular meeting is October 5th. And Morgan will be, Morgan will be the chair. Well, the next one, I'll be out of time. And again, thank you very much. And clean the rest of it. And thank you very much for coming. Appreciate all you guys.